To look over the list that was provided to us by Cassidy to see how much employees were compensated for their certifications and education. Can you kind of enlighten us on what this was?
With the best that I could do pulling from old documents?
Yeah, I'm gonna show them things later. We called the work session by the order six twenty seven. Thank you, Cassidy.
So with my best recollection, as far as I can tell, this was just going through the list of employees and who I knew had degrees or certifications or combination they were on there. It looks like there was overall maybe eight employees who received two steps or more for something across all departments and only one, I did not realize until I was looking at here, but only one has received and they have received exactly four steps total, so.
So the one step ones are okay and it's the ones that are, I mean, there's nobody, there's nobody over?
Nobody is over four, there's one that has met his goal and that's it.
So nobody is over?
Nobody's over four.
So, um, how, so what did I? Thank you, Cassidy.
So, so this is, so this is just the, without names?
Okay.
So the three Cassidy that are proposed to get two steps, are they gonna go over four?
No.
And, and is this, like, how, how will you know, how, how are y'all keeping up with this without manually going in doing whatever you just did?
So, status change forms is a big thing for us to have in the personnel files, that's something Jane has pushed from the get-go. For this implementation, we need a status change form that'll show exactly how we came to what we came to.
That, that falls out.
That way we can track it. If you think, anybody that was given credit, there is documented credit for it. So Nate said he could provide us what he proposed to you got for those folks to not, he could have it to us by the one.
And once we, before we give the steps, one more question, before we give the steps, does some sort of copy of the certification go in their file, Jane?
Yes.
Wow, I mean, this makes sense, thanks Cassidy. So it doesn't even matter if somebody says one thing deserves four steps, that's all they can give.
Hey, Charles, y'all's recommendation, all right?
Just wrapping this up though, are we still planning to approve the fire department changes to get Nate where he thinks he should have been based on having a discussion we did?
I'm on plan with, uh, going with the mayor's recommendation.
It is, but I'm gonna change my mind, I don't need to change it, but it makes sense now. So even the people that Nate says are getting two steps and even in the other departments, it doesn't matter because they can't go over four.
Is that what you're asking, which plan we're going with?
Oh, my bad.
We're, I thought we were going to add the fire.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going with the mayor's plan, but this is what he has presented, this is what they've worked on, so.
Jane, did y'all work on the mayor's plan, does that work?
The ma- the mayor's plan is the first plan, the first plan, yeah, the first plan that y'all be here. We need to have the standard edition be. It's the very first plan that y'all gave, it was running there. Huh?
Is this the very first plan that's done?
We need to sell the plans off.
I think we need to add in the fire department, we're gonna add in the fire department. It's only eighteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, they can't, they can't get over four. Yeah, yes, yes.
Ashton, where you think?
Mayor's plan, police, it's had some reason. And then eighteen thousand, two five.
Yeah, yeah.
I do understand the point's to pay the captain for it, so it doesn't matter.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Okay.
It's only gonna be thirteen thousand, five hundred fifty-nine dollars, forty-two cents for fire for, not eighteen.
Right. Just for the first of year, I got it.
Cassidy, are the, are the people that left out of the fire department, were they included in this to make sure they didn't go over the four?
No, not this. Uh, they will not go over the four, not with what's, what's next.
Okay.
That's right.
Okay.
Want to end the work session?
Okay, uh, let's, does anybody have additional comments, questions, concerns?
One more thing, who, who do we need to keep, we need to, which one of these?
Mayor's plan. Mayor's plan was the eighteen thousand, or the thirteen thousand.
Fire department. And again.
We need to move the, moving from the agenda. Item number twenty-five.
Twenty-five, twenty-nine.
Do we need to rework this, that you're?
Well, we just said that we're approving the mayor's pay plan plus the, plus the, uh, the additional part of the numbers from the original plan.
Okay.
Yeah, because the mayor's plan, it already makes it to four.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep, that's number thirteen. Alex, can you add those numbers?
Sir.
So.
I've already done it.
Yeah, so we can have the number then.
Can you give us that number for?
For James' fire department?
What number?
No.
Oh. Yeah, I can do that, give me a second.
Do we need five minutes?
If we can let, we can let Alex read that, there's some. It's number thirteen.
No, it's not, except for exclusive, so.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, number twenty-six. So we need to add in, uh.
It's January thirteenth, correct?
Effective Jan-. It was the end of February, correct? End of February, correct?
What, what was the date, I'm sorry?
January thirteenth.
Item number twenty-six.
Thirteen.
Yes, yes, because what we have proposed is not fully considering that.
Okay, so do we, do we need to add? Does the resolution reflect the fire department, Alex?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so I don't have to take any, any, any questions?
But she could say, just to put it out, we're approving the mayor's pay plan.
Yeah.
Plus the fire department section, open December nineteenth fourth.
Okay.
Twenty-nine.
I think I have Alex read it.
Okay.
Got your numbers?
Oh, yeah, are y'all ready to adjourn to the work session?
You're, you're getting the number right, you gotta read the number.
Do you want the total implementation?
Sure.
Yep. We'll ask you to read that.
But go ahead and read it now too, if you don't mind, I'm so hurried.
Eight hundred, four thousand, two hundred seventy-eight dollars and seventy cents.
All right, everybody got their comments, questions, concerns addressed, anybody have additional? Comments? Alex, do you have anything, Jane, anybody?
Still happy.
Okay.
Next one.
All right, perfect, all right. Well.
Final word, took one without.
All right, well, let's call the work session to adjourn at six thirty-seven P M. Now, let's call the council meeting to order at six thirty-seven P M. Roll call Ashton Fowler.
Here.
Tiffany, here, Nate Burger.
Here.
Lee Perryman.
Marky.
The motion was provided by Nate Osgood, make a pledge.
United States of America, into a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, do you have anything for us tonight?
Nothing tonight, because I'm red.
I need a motion to adopt the agenda points.
Motion.
Lee Perryman, second.
Motion.
Second.
You have to announce the.
Second? All in favor? Well, we may have just set the.
Sorry, Tiffany, second.
Tiffany, second, all in favor?
Yeah.
Second?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We don't have any items from old business, new business. We don't have any items from old business, new business. Action that is necessary to rescind the sign-on bonus agreement, resolution number ninety-two, twenty-twenty-one, with effective date of January thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Action that is necessary to rescind the active fire department incident policy last revised and approved by council action on November sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one, and the policy's original establishment approved by the council action on November second, twenty-sixteen, to be effective January thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four. I need a motion, please? All active applicable agreements will be honored through their respective periods of completion, however, no additional offers will be extended at a time of power for previously applicable positions. I need a motion, please?
Motion. Motion.
Second? Second?
Second. Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Yeah. Yeah.
Action that is necessary to rescind the active fire department incident policy last revised and approved by council action on November sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one, and the policy's original establishment Action that is necessary to rescind the active fire department incident policy last revised and approved by council action on November sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one, and the policy's original establishment approved by the council action on November second, twenty-sixteen, to be effective January thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four. I need a motion, please? approved by the council action on November second, twenty-sixteen, to be effective January thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four. I need a motion, please?
Motion. Motion.
Tiffany, next, second? Tiffany, next, second?
Second. Second.
Ashton Fowler, all in favor? Ashton Fowler, all in favor?
Yeah. Yeah.
Action that is necessary to rescind the establishment of pay rates of part-time firefighters, part-time police officers, and part-time animal shelter employees originally established and approved by council on November sixth, twenty-eighteen, and resolution number ninety-one, twenty-eighteen, then further amended and approved on November twentieth, twenty-eighteen, and resolution number ninety-four, twenty-eighteen, effective January thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Any motion, please?
Motion.
Who's that?
Ashton.
Oh, Ashton. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Action that is necessary to approve the amendment of the heading title to City of Sulicaga Personnel Policies and Procedures, ten dot, seven dot, two, to avoid step raise. Any motion, please?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Am I on the wrong page? Wait, do we, oh, sorry. I thought that was one, sorry. Action that is necessary to rescind resolution twenty-two, two thousand and three. Any police officer when assigned as an investigator will be provided twenty-five dollars per week supplement to their regular base salary for as long as they are assigned as an investigator in the police department. When the police officer is no longer assigned as an investigator, this supplement shall be removed immediately, and the policy's original establishment approved by council action on October twenty-ninth, two thousand and three, to be effective January thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four.
A quick discussion, this was because we already increased it and changed it last week, at the last meeting, and we forgot to repeal this one, so we've already replaced that program. No, gotta go, this is.
No, this is what we were sending in, yeah. I need a motion, please?
Motion.
Any second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Action that is necessary to approve amendment of heading title to City of Sulicaga Personnel Policies and Procedures, ten dot, seven dot, two dot, three, to separate procedures. Any motion, please?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Action that is necessary to approve amendment of the heading title to City of Sulicaga Personnel Policies and Procedures, ten dot, seven dot, two dot, three dot, one, to merit-based step raises. Any motion, please?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Action that is necessary to approve amendment regarding changes from biannual to annual step raises of City of Sulicaga Personnel Policies and Procedures, ten dot, seven dot, two dot, three dot, one, one to reflect the following wording. A step raise should occur at the completion of entry-level probation and every year of continuous service thereafter until the maximum step has been received within an employee's rank. No end of probation step raise will be given for promotions and/or transfers. I need a motion, please?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Yeah.
Action that is necessary to approve amendment regarding changes from biannual to annual step raise. Okay, step raises of Sulicaga Personnel Policies and Procedures, ten dot, seven dot, two dot, three dot, one, two, eight, to reflect the following wording. An employee's last scheduled annual performance appraisal must reflect a rating of satisfactory or above. Any motion, please?
Motion.
Are we doing this this year? Are we gonna consider this this year as well, after we do the plan?
That's built in the pay plan?
Yep.
Yes, all built in. I need a motion, please?
I got a motion.
Ashton Fowler?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Action that is necessary to approve amendment regarding changes from biannual to annual step raises of City of Sulicaga Personnel Policies and Procedures, ten dot, seven dot, two dot, three dot, one, three, to reflect the following wording. Employees who do not receive a step raise due to failure to meet the merit-based requirements listed above may be considered for a step raise succeeding years and all requirements are met. I need a motion, please?
Motion.
Ashton Fowler, second?
Second.
Lee Perryman, all in favor?
Yeah.
Action that is necessary to approve amendment regarding changes to the award period of step raises from October of each year to the employee's hire date anniversary of City of Sulicaga Personnel Policies and Procedures, ten dot, seven dot, two dot, three dot, one, four, to reflect the following wording. With the exception of the step raise provided at the completion of the entry-level probation, all raises awarded will become effective at the beginning of the pay period following the employee's hire date anniversary provided that the correlating performance appraisal and status change form are submitted by the department head. I need a motion, please?
Motion.
Ashton Fowler? Second? Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
You gotta just go on, if you ask twice, just keep going.
Okay. Okay, I don't think, all in favor?
You don't, you don't.
Okay, no, so I don't.
That's a motion, I would guess.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense. Action that is necessary to approve amendment of the heading title to City of Sulicaga Personnel Policies and Procedures, ten dot, seven dot, two dot, three dot, three, to step raise amount. Any motion, please?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Action that is necessary to approve amendment of City of Sulicaga Personnel Policies and Procedures, ten dot, seven dot, two dot, three dot, three, to reflect the following wording. Classified employees will receive step raise in amount specified by the city's pay plan. Any motion, please?
Motion.
Ashton Fowler, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Item number twenty.
That was.
That was.
That was twenty-one.
That was twenty-one, we did tw- because that was.
You gotta go back to twenty.
We did, okay, yeah, we did do twenty, yeah, we did twenty, yeah, twenty-one, sorry. I got six, yeah, okay. Item number twenty-two, action that is necessary to approve amendment of heading title to City of Sulicaga Personnel Policies and Procedures, ten dot, seven dot, two dot, three dot, four, to step raise qualification. Any motion, please?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Action that is necess- item number twenty-three, action that is necessary to approve the amendment of City of Sulicaga Personnel Policies and Procedures, ten dot, seven dot, two dot, three dot, four, to reflect the following wording. Proper verification of qualification for the step raises missed accompany the request for a step raise and submitted to human resources for evaluation, example, employee performance appraisal, copy of degree, certification, licenser, transcripts, and status change form. I need a motion, please?
Motion.
I heard Ashton first. I need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Item number twenty-four. Action that is necessary to approve amendment of the heading title to City of Sulicaga Personnel Policies and Procedures, ten dot, seven dot, two dot, three dot, five, to step raise integrity. Any motion, please?
Motion.
I heard Ashton Fowler first, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
We want that off during work session. Um, item number twenty-six, action that is necessary to approve the proposed implementation of city employees on the approved F Y twenty-four restructured pay plan with the new rates effective January thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four, City Clerk treasured to read over all total implementation costs and funding sources into the meeting minutes, and we will be approving the mayor's pay plan with additional fire department, um, in minutes.
Fire department, earmarked funds?
Total number, right?
Yeah, total number, and, well, and then the total implementation cost and funding, like, how each department's being funded.
The total number's gonna be eight hundred, four thousand, two hundred seventy-eight thousand, seventy dollars.
Okay.
Fire department, out of their earmarked funds, is gonna be three hundred fifty thousand, one hundred eighty dollars and seventy-two cents. Police department, a hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred forty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Okay.
The street department, a hundred thousand even. Total from unused salaries, two hundred ten thousand, seven hundred fifty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents. Do I need to repeat anything?
That's, okay, I need a motion.
Motion.
Ashton Fowler, second?
Second.
Lee Perryman, all in favor?
Yeah.
Yay. Item number twenty-seven, action that is necessary to approve resolution number eight, twenty-twenty-four, regarding F Y twenty-four restructured pay plan, City Clerk treasured to read resolution eight, twenty-twenty-four into the meeting. I need, I need a motion? Oh, she's gonna read, are you?
Am I reading it?
Yeah.
Okay. Resolution eight dash twenty twenty-four, implementation of current City of Sulicag employees onto the F Y twenty-four restructured pay plan effective January thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Whereas the City of Sulicag recognizes the need for a comprehensive and equitable pay structure for its employees and, whereas, the F Y twenty-four restructured pay plan aims to address current employee placement, compression, inflation, consumer price index, C P I increases, longevity, education, certifications, and training, and, whereas, human resources has developed a new pay plan hereafter, referred to as the F Y twenty-four restructured pay plan, as a result of the aforementioned periodic review and evaluation with aims to provide competitive compensation particularly for positions facing recruitment challenges and high vacancies, and, now, therefore, be resolved by the city council of the City of Sulicag, Alabama. Current wage consideration. All current employees are first placed on their respective position grade in step on the F Y twenty-four restructured pay plan closest to their current wage, taking into consideration their position and experience as of the effective date of January thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Additional steps for compression, inflation, and C P I increases. To ensure fairness in account for compression, inflation, and C P I increases, current employees are granted two additional steps forward along their respective positions grade. Law enforcement officers were exempted from this application due to receiving a twenty percent increase in wages in the March twenty-twenty-three implementation of a new pay plan. Three, steps for longevity. In recognition of employees' dedication and service, current employees received additional steps forward along their respective positions grade in the following increments. A total of two steps for five through nine years of continuous employment, a total of three steps for ten to fourteen years of continuous employment, a total of four steps for fifteen through nineteen years of continuous employment, and a total of five steps for twenty years or more of continuous employment. Law enforcement officers were exempted from this application due to receiving a twenty percent increase in wages in March twenty-twenty-three implementation of a new pay plan. Four, education steps. All current employees with qualifying education certifications and licensers as outlined in exhibit A were granted with correlating additional steps forward along their respective positions grade. Adopted and approved this twenty-third day of January twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you, Alex. I need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Item number twenty-eight, action that is necessary to approve resolution number nine, twenty-four, regarding F Y twenty-four restructured pay plan implementation, City Clerk treasured to read resolution number nine, twenty-twenty-four into the meeting minutes.
Motion, dispense the reading, second.
I don't think we need to suspend, I, I vote.
I don't, I don't either.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nay.
Nay.
Tiffany, what's your vote?
To dispense the reading. Okay, next one?
Three in favor, two nays.
Resolution nine, twenty twenty-four, adoption of F Y twenty-four restructured pay plan, whereas, it is the City of Sulicag's responsibility to provide its employees fair and equitable compensation periodically reviewed and evaluated for effectiveness, and, whereas, the current pay plan for city employees is in need of an update to address issues of employee retention and recruitment, and, whereas, human resources has developed a new pay plan. Hereafter referred to as the F Y twenty-four restructured pay plan, as a result of the aforementioned period review and evaluation with aims to provide competitive compensation particularly for positions facing recruitment challenges with high vacancies, and, whereas, the budget allocation for salary increases will be derived as follows. Two hundred ten thousand, seven hundred fifty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents from unused salaries. Three hundred fifty thousand, one hundred eighty dollars and seventy-two cents from the fire department's earmarked funds. A hundred forty-three thousand, three hundred forty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents from the police department's earmarked funds. A hundred thousand even from the street department's earmarked funds. These funds were initially allocated through the tax allocation specified in resolution number twenty-three dash twenty twenty-three. Salaries beyond fiscal year twenty-four will be incorporated into the fiscal year budget. Now, therefore, be resolved by the city council of the City of Sulicag in Alabama. Implementation date, the F Y twenty-four restructured pay plan for city employees shall be implemented on the first full pay period of January twenty twenty-four. Steps in grade. The F Y twenty-four restructured pay plan establishes a single grade specific to position titles with steps to allow for career progression as provided in exhibit A, pay scales. Three, education. The F Y twenty-four restructured pay plan aims to acknowledge and reward employees for their educational achievements through the policy outlined in City of Sulicag Personnel Policies and Procedures, ten dot, seven dot, two dot, three dot, two. A list of qualifying degrees, certifications, and licensers specific to position titles provided in exhibit B. Four, annual raises. The F Y twenty-four restructured pay plan aims to award eligible merit step raises to employees on an annual basis effective at the beginning of the pay period following the employee's hire date anniversary, provided that the correlating performance appraisal and status change form are submitted by the department head through the policy outlined in the City of Sulicag's personal policies and procedures.
Quick interruption. We decided not to do that on the anniversary, so that ordinance needs to be changed, resolution needs to be changed, it will be beginning of fiscal year.
But we've already, but that's figured into the pay plan already.
But we still can't tell her what to put in it.
Nobody said anything.
Yeah, so either, either we're gonna vote for it to be, like, the end of fiscal year, or it's gonna have to, that's gonna have to be amended, or it's gonna have to come out, because we can't just say we didn't vote.
That's one of our motions, nobody said it.
Yeah, that's what we, but that's what in the pay plan was to, um, have that, those step raises included.
For anniversary or what?
Um, annual raise, provided salary.
But the annual date should be on fiscal year, it's administratively difficult to have hundreds of different things processed.
But, but what I'm saying is, that, but y'all still have to vote on it because you just passed it.
The annual raises, they want to do it instead of on anniversary days, at the first, everybody gets it all at once.
Yep.
So we'll start on October, it'll still be included in this pay plan. Right, like, going forward, we'll start on October. Yeah.
May October one instead on the anniversary day.
But this year, it'll take effect.
On October one, on October one.
So we're not gonna do it, so that'll change the implementation.
But what I'm saying, it, it sounds like everybody's saying the same thing, but still, that's gonna have. But what I'm saying, it, it sounds like everybody's saying the same thing, but still, that's gonna have to be amended, and y'all still need to vote on it, because we skipped over it.
Well, no, we, we, we approved that, but it's not showing up in an earlier part.
We skipped over it, voting on the anniversary date.
And so, did, that's what I'm saying. I don't think that's gonna work, because it, like, I mean, start, we can do it for next year, but if, did some people get their raises already for this year, okay?
Nope.
No, maybe.
No.
Because that's what I wanna make sure of, that's nobody.
So, it won't change the pay back off.
Won't change it into fiscal year.
Everything was calculated off of hire date anniversary. Yeah, so that changes the whole plan. Still gotta change the resolution, is what I'm saying.
Yep, gotta, gotta change the resolution.
Okay, will that be for, after twenty-five?
Immediately.
Scratch it right now, right?
Just scratch for twice.
But will that change the, that'll change the complete implementation.
It won't make it higher.
No, like, that's already figured in this implementation, correct? Like, that's already all figured in, that's what we were passing.
Figured in the anniversary date.
It's that the anniversary date's already figured in this pay plan. So, now we're taking the anniversary date out, which will make this pay plan numbers completely change.
So, are you saying do it for the, um, anniversary date this year, and then next year?
Yeah, next year start October first and from here on out, because that's what the number, like, those numbers are figured in already.
Can we put that into the resolution, Alex?
That changes everything.
If, if, if we do what she's saying, if we don't change the resolution, the resolution has to be changed next year.
We'll need to change, revote it, yeah, in October, like.
Pro- processing it that way would be an administrative nightmare.
But what she's saying is, I think what she's saying, I agree, but what she's saying is, we already know, we're reading, like, so we're gonna, we're gonna end here, like.
I see what you're saying, like. Yeah.
But it just means the numbers will be, be adjusted down.
Just tell me what we're doing. I don't think that's a good idea, like, to take it away from them this year, since that's what.
But they're still gonna get it, it's right.
They get it.
No, they're gonna get it this year, they'll get it next year.
Get it, get it on October first.
H R's got something.
It is, your, your administrative nightmare's gonna be your performance appraisal's happening all at one time for these big departments, that's a big task, that's gonna be the challenge for them.
That's fine, it's spread out among several people instead of one. A single payroll cur- can sponsor, can change fifteen or twenty or thirty different pay rates during a month to be able to be, just not be bogged down, it doesn't make sense.
So, what are we doing, what do you think?
I, I think that it needs to be set to, uh, anniversary of the year, which is October first, not the anniversary of the employer.
That means all the numbers change.
All the numbers change.
The numbers don't go up.
But they go down.
So, we can just put not to exceed that number, because it's not going up, the pay plan number.
But if we put everything on, you're saying we put everything on October one, it corrects habit, right?
It's the same.
It spreads it among several department heads rather than one person doing processing.
So, but since guys here, I'm fine with it one, but realistically, we've already got these numbers here.
Yes.
We've been fighting against this, but it's been rushed since, what, the last week in November? I, I say we go with the resolution we have now, and then we can, can we put some in the resolution, Alex, saying we'll revisit this and then go with October, uh.
Just passing the resolution.
Just before I went.
Right, we need to put something where we revisit it, and then do it October, but I feel like we need to pass this tonight. It'd be done and finalized and over, we're tired of talking about a pay plan.
But, can budgets, that, you know, cycle for next year, we can.
Pass it on.
Pass, but, or, or starting on October first.
Yeah, and if we're doing it next.
We can't do it April, because it's still gonna be.
Well, but here now is we can do it down the road, we can pass this one, it's already implemented, it's done.
Yeah.
And change the resolution.
And change the resolution coming up, but it's not gonna.
Whenever, down the road.
But Alex can continue reading it.
Okay, Alex, I'm sorry, will you finish reading, please?
You was at the end, I hope.
I wasn't. Annual raises, okay. The F Y twenty-four restructured pay plan aims to award eligible merit step raises to employees on an annual basis effective.
Doesn't make sense.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
Annual raises, the F Y twenty-four restructured pay plan aims to award eligible merit raises to employees on an annual basis effective at the beginning of the pay period following the employee's hire date anniversary, provided the correlating performance appraisal and status change form are submitted by the department head through the policy outlined in the City of Sulicag's Personnel Policies and Procedures seven, two, three, two, one. Night shift differential, the F Y twenty-four restructured pay plan aims to continue to acknowledge night shift differential. Repeal of prior compensation practices and pay plans. This resolution repeals any and all previous fair and equitable pay plans, incentives, and related compensation practices effective and operating prior to January thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Adopted and approved on this twenty-third day of January twenty twenty-four.
Thank you.
Make a motion?
I'm sorry, I'm confused, what exactly are we doing?
It's staying the same right now, from what I understood, right, everybody.
We're on our anniversary date this year.
Yes, until we pass another resolution, whenever.
For next budget cycle.
November, October, before next budget cycle.
Okay, thank you.
Ashton made a motion?
Yep.
Second?
Second.
Berger? All in favor?
Yay.
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 Forward to one. Time for anyone to address the city council, no action to be taken at this meeting, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for record prior to addressing the council. Having no further business to discuss, and I would like to say one thing, thank you, H R, thank you to the city clerk's office, thank you to all the department heads for all the time that you put into this pay plan. I absolutely really appreciate all, everything y'all devoted to it. Alright, having no further business to discuss, I need a motion to adjourn.
Alright, did you ask give number eighteen off of us?
I did number eighteen.
I'll make the motion adjourn.
I need a second? Um, second, all in favor?
Yay.
Yay.
Come on, adjournment seven oh four.